We're going to call our meeting tone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, we are going to be visited by George from the Health Department. He's going to give us an update on Nasa Beach, I'm sure.
Yeah, just a general update.
I was called frantically by selectmen and our delegate from Dennis, who happens to have a stand at Nasa Beach, and they closed Nasa Beach a week ago Friday, last Friday.
You've seen a lot of losses.
They had seen a lot of losses, but not only that, it was the one nice weekend that was going to be, you know, for sure, and here it was, locked, closed down. So I got right on, you know, and there was George, and he filled me in, and I said, "I'm going to give you John's phone number if you could carry that forward." And then John left me a message Saturday morning praising, praising the swift action of the county.
I would suggest to you that there's a 24-hour lag in the testing of the beach.
I know, that's...
It would have happened anyway.
That was going to happen anyway, but it could have...
But it could have been, if we're not there to read the samples at the lab, is what you should applaud George for.
Right.
He scratches open the lab on the weekends so people can come in, read the samples, so that instead of it being closed Saturday and Sunday,
Right, exactly.
You can get it open.
No, no, they acted very swiftly, and he had people right on the job. And I wrote, I wrote back to George and thanked him for his efforts, and that, you know, it really went well. And then he went down himself Saturday morning to the beach, which impressed everybody.
Was Dennis the place we had a problem with spoils just before July?
What do you mean, the spoils?
Well, they dredged, they dredged beaches and they got the spoils.
Right, right.
Beaches of July, and there's a significant increase in insect population.
Yes.
When you said Dennis, the Fourth of July, I knew about Nasa Beach, but there's also two lakes, and two farms, one in Bristol, and one in Howard, closed in the same period because of, because of the floods in Belgium. The one next to me has been open, but the one in Bristol is closed.
I think that's true.
We might, a little bit from our new and improved agenda.
Yes, thank you.
If the Lord's not here, searching him out, he should be, and his way is usually a great problem.
Yes, he is.
So I have a couple of things we can get out of the way. I have some update on the August 12 Cooperative Extension Tour that Bill is putting together. And of course, since I started working on it, I knew that would work. But just to let you know, we're going to try to do our start time on that meeting at 9:00 AM. We'll come in, do our pledge of allegiance, open the meeting, probably just do your signing stuff, and then we're going to try to board the bus and have the bus leave the county complex by 9:30, so that we can get this show on the road. Bill tells me that last year when we did this, we left at 9:30, got back at 2:30. So that's the goal, is to come back by 2:30. We will have lunch over at the farm.
And the date again?
It's August 12, at 9 o'clock. If people are interested, I'd ask them to contact either myself or Bill Clark, just so that we know how many people are attending, so we have enough space on the bus, basically. So looking forward to that, that should be awesome.
Since we're in administration, before we leave, next, the meeting, the meeting on the 22nd, it's a very important meeting of the IPA. I'm wondering what time we need to do it.
I was planning a 10 o'clock start that day, which we will have on the agenda. I know Dan was a little pressed for time in the afternoon. Dan Gallagher was talking about Oden Cape, and I asked Darlene to come over to talk about the update on the Maricor, because we have some signing stuff going on.
Okay, I'll try to get here as quickly as I can.
Or we can maybe start at 11:00.
Okay.
Sure, that's when, that's when we're supposed to...
10:30.
11:00, if you're trying to make sure that you're rolling, definitely, okay?
Yes, Jim. I'll get it later. Okay, George, you're here, how are you?
We just moved up here. Before you start, you did a great job.
Yes, I was just singing your praises for you ahead of time.
You helped us a great deal on your response.
Yes.
On which one? It could be the town with sewage response. Yeah, we're not ready for that. How was sewage response, Blackpool or the...
Yes, you've been busy.
It's been a time since the Fourth of July. It does. Well, there've been a few mishaps around wastewater treatment plants that have been close to water, and we've been called to advise them as far as what the strategy should be. We're fairly conservative in that regard. We always say, "Close the beaches, test them, and then wait a while and retest the beaches." But everything has worked out fine, found patterns, it's been robust, and of course, progress. And more recently, early closure of Nasa Beach. How could I miss it?
Yes.
For that, we responded fairly quickly, and we kept the lab open. We sent staff down there to try to explain to people because their beach staff were a little bit over the roof with a lot of people asking questions about it. We felt it was a fairly transient event, but we can't respond any other way than to do what we did. And we are working at the Town of Orleans now to sort of revise their sort of standard operating procedures for keeping their main economic-based beaches open by shifting their days for sampling for Monday. They're going to bring in their samples, and we've also talked with the Health Agency and the Board of Health regarding different sampling strategies that might minimize the chances of this happening again. It's probably a once-in-a-hundred occurrence, and some seal left us a little bit, or a set of seals left us a bit. And if you remember, a couple of years ago, at the seashore, something happened, we were called and asked...
Coast Guard, Coast Guard.
We were called and asked about that. We told them we didn't believe it was any wastewater, that it was probably seals, and that had mixed reviews. However, when WBZ turned the cameras to the ocean, when the beach opened up, is that look who showed up, the beach opened, there were two seals.
Right.
But people would really need to think of that as equating with as much fecal coliform as people produce, or some people. So, there has been that.
A lovely thought is, I love seeing those seals out there, but now...
Oh, yeah, well, around Waltham.
Right, yes.
And one other thing that has sort of made the news a little bit lately, and because it deals with my correspondence with elected official Matt Patrick, has been the whole issue of the blackwater diversion techniques. Now, we started that being composting or urine diversion, and in essence, we'd like to investigate those as viable alternatives. We had always wanted to do that, thinking that towns like Waltham, Eastham, and those on Wells, Truro, might benefit from having a strategy other than just thinking about sewers right away. But unfortunately, how it could get spun, or as interpreted, as those towns that are further along in the process and are now facing the real reality of how much these things cost, then of course, the public sees this and says, "Oh, that's our salvation." It was never meant to be that, and it certainly could be used as a diversion in those towns that are well ahead and are now facing some pretty dire financial numbers for folks. But we still think we should pursue it. We had asked, or Matt Patrick had asked me to put together a proposal about a year ago. I did, which really was a good stepwise approach to get at the issue, what are the regulatory issues are, what the scientific issues are, and what benefit a community might reap by using those technologies. So we're still proceeding with it, and I heard from DEP recently, although they cannot say anything official, they are reviewing all the grant proposals today. We had submitted two this year, one for the test center to continue operations now, and one is blackwater. And I believe that both of them will be, to some extent, funded, because the one for the test center dealt with the whole issue of pharmaceuticals and personal care products getting into our water supplies, so we thought that that was worthwhile, we'd get a jump on. We've been looking at that now for the past four years, and we just need to step up the effort so that we can get the information needed.
A question, are you testing it at all, or you test late now for urine diversion?
Uh, no, because that would require a house. I mean, we could all, I had thought of putting a little bounce house out there for the three male staff members who are coming out there, we would probably create a bit for them.
What about the fact that they haven't been approved yet?
Well, the plumbing company, they haven't been approved in the plumbing company. And so that is obviously a regulatory hurdle. There is one in the state, in fact, there's one down in Orleans. And they can get put in under special circumstances. So part of the grant was actually to rock them through the process and find out what that regulatory hurdle was. The plumbing board, and I've talked to two members of the plumbing board, have said, "No, all we need to do is see it before, somebody needs to bring it out before." So we don't do that, because it's a product.
Right.
And there are many products out there, I don't know the names of them, but they should be doing this. Once that tool becomes available, we will use it. However, until that time, we'll place more emphasis on composted toilets. And these are not your daddy's composted toilets. It's not the black hole anymore, it's a white porcelain, a pastel toilet. I just recently viewed one down in Sandwich, or Bourne, excuse me, in a beautiful house, talked to the owner, any problems, this and that. I think that our first efforts in this regard will probably be to work with people to have that. And the key issue, by the way, is, if you use a composting toilet, what is the residual nitrogen from your gray water? And is that equal to or better than a treatment plant would give before load that most people give a house, the total wastewater? And what do you do with the residuals, the tea that's left in the compost? So that was part of the grant, figure out what are the economics behind that, what would drive it, what would make it economically viable for a town? Why we particularly looked at Waltham Eastham, is their own wells, and I've been to enough of their Board of Health hearings, where people are really up against the Waltham system, the septic system in their well, they're working right there.
So can I, I want to back up a minute. On the alternative, what you're saying is, the gentleman who has the composting one, do you have the science behind that of how it fares out with the nitrogen output?
No, we actually don't.
Okay.
Anybody who's put in composting toilets has never been on a monitoring plane for their gray water.
Right.
Because it's always been a symptom, they just did it for, you know, it's a green technology, and they would use the compost on their lot, and the tea that's produced would get hauled away with the hauler. But you know, you start to think about that in a comprehensive way for a town, that isn't just one or two people know that tea, or one or two people that accomplish, it's a serious volume, a thousand houses, half a million gallons a year, roughly, and then the compost volume beyond that. So we need to look at what are the economics of that? Is it a marketable product? Can it be reprocessed? Other universities who can help us figure out how to reprocess it. Because fertilizers today are, you know, expensively produced, paper process creates a lot of energy, just to get nitrogen fertilizer in that every day. We have that nitrogen fertilizer in some form.
So what you're, so the, ideally, if you had, say, a volunteer house come forward and say, "I will retrofit my house to accommodate this black diversion," for lack of, as a better word, then we could see how much it would cost to do that retro, and then you could do the testing there to see what a household would, what the output is.
What would follow this into is Kendall's program, which said that the septic loan program is funded, can fund these things. So what we would do is reduce the regular loan rate for them, so that's a subsidy to them, retract their costs carefully, retract all the residuals. For two years, they won't have to worry about anything. We will water to the gray water, we will take care of the residuals. DEP, through the grant process, they will give them a certain amount of money toward that also. So you get the subsidy of the loan, loan reduction, subsidy from the grant who proposed a certain subsidy to the people, primarily, you know, caused a monitoring maintenance contract. So for two years, we will get enough information. We need probably about 20 or 30 of these out there to be a good valid statistical, you know, picture. It would get the cost of all reconstruction, what people went through. There's new constructions, a lot different.
Now, the other question, with the statement, I just want to clarify of what you were saying when you first started out, is although there's a lot of talk of this, you're not proposing this to take the place of sewer-ing, where sewer-ing, where it's number one towns are ahead of the game as far as they're sewer-ing and they're going in that direction, but also in some areas of a town, like I will take Waltham. Waltham has the concentrated population downtown, and, you know, to me, it is acceptable to do sewer-ing in this concentrated, you know, short pipe, you know, where it's economically feasible. But where I live, I'm away from town, I'm on the seashore side, you know, so for me, this is a viable option. We're not going to have pipes come to us, we're not all there in the winter in my neighborhood, you know, so for a town to look at how it's going to handle it as an overall plan, they could look at both of these systems as being comprehensive.
All we do is provide the information, the tools, that's it. Here's something you could use, here's the economics of it, you decide how it fits in your comprehensive wastewater plan. Unfortunately, what's happening is people saying, "Oh my God, $28,000, I could do this for..."
Yeah, let me do the alternative, but we're not even sure, but we haven't had enough science behind the alternative to get the whole package and to see if it's really that much more beneficial.
Or our...
Yeah. And who's actually doing the science on this?
They would be doing it.
Yeah, they would be doing it. But I mean, but I mean, what scientists are doing it?
We would be doing it.
Yeah, they would be doing it. This is a proposal that he's putting out, he would like to be able to get 20 people to come up and say, "I'll give you my house, let's go far, you can use my house." And now, what if it comes out that, I'm sorry, what if it comes out that if you, if you did do this, and it's not a good, a good alternative? How do we retro that house back?
Well, I don't think there's any risk of that, at all. But where the, where the information may show that it is not economically viable, it may show that there are more issues than you realize. For instance, in Fowleth, right now, Ray Jack, who I highly respect, he's a highly knowledgeable person, very articulate, and he has brought up an argument, which must be tased, and the argument goes like this. If I have a lot of these things out there, and I have gray water dispersed, just like we have septic systems now, what if in the future I find out that a personal care product or a pharmaceutical that gets deposited in those gray water systems is highly detrimental? Now, we've got all these systems, just like I had septic systems. He's saying, "Well, if I bring it all to a sewer, I got one treatment point, I got one place that I have to market dead." And you know, that's an argument that has to be vetted out and say, "Okay, what are the risks, what are the real possibilities of that happening, probabilities of that happening? How do they weigh against what the cost of one is against the other?" These are the things that really need to be brought up, and they can't be brought up in the background, and people say, "Oh, that's got to be cheap, let's just do it."
Right.
It's got to be brought up with, where's the information? And we take a very similar task that we did with alternate septic systems. You'll remember, 10 years ago, if you can, 10 years ago, they would say, "I systems are the best thing since sliced bread," and we said, "No, let's make sure." And we're making sure. And now we know very well, we're really a resource for the rest of the country in how these things work in a managed way, and we have the numbers. And that's, those numbers have been used in every comprehensive wastewater plan on Cape Cod, they look to us, and they say, "How much does it cost, how much do they remove, is there good bank for a buck here?" And they use that information. We are not predisposed on any solution.
Right.
All we do is say, "Here are the facts, use them wisely." We have to be careful sometimes when somebody takes those facts and lapses around to their benefit, but that's why public forms like this are good, because people hear, they say, "Oh, they're not wack, they know what they're doing, and they're not trying to force anything, because we're not."
No, Bill, I've been waiting, I'm sorry, Bill, you have questions?
Yes. I don't understand the part about the gray water issue, because I keep thinking of Pletus Molten, which is a technology that's been on time.
That's right.
And that's only an aeration type of, you know, type of treatment.
But it's a compost, an aerated compostation.
So you don't, you don't have any entry into your groundwater if you're using, using that kind of technology?
Well, you don't, of your human waste, but your dishwasher, you wash clothes washing, your showers don't ever feed through a furnace, it wouldn't be able to handle a volume of water.
All right, so you're talking about a treatment system for human waste as separate from a gray water system, like the old thing about...
We're talking about a house.
Like, we used to build a, was it a barrel with stone for, like, with a French drain to take care of the...
Gray water.
Now, there's another question that bears on this, and that has to do with, we do hazardous waste collections, and there's a serious issue with regard to pharmaceuticals as far as collection. I don't think that we're in a position to take responsibility for collecting controlled substances as part of a hazardous waste collection program, but I wonder if we should be providing some method for consumers when they do turn in hazardous materials, so that they can get a bag or something to bring it to an appropriate place?
Well, we do provide that guidance, but we actually, both the Extension Service and I, have a pretty common line, it is, if you have medications, they should be taken, mixed with something like cat litter, moistened, so that they can never be reused by anybody who finds them, placed inside a plastic bottle, a bottle like you'd get your laundry detergent around a thick plastic bottle, cap taped and thrown in the trash, because burning and incineration has been shown to be a very effective way to get rid of it, without providing, you know, excess air pollution. Plus, it doesn't get into the groundwater, because we are, we have farms in towns like Waltham, and others that have wells, that wells are showing up with fire titans, with drugs, particularly caffeine, which is everywhere. There are some systems that you're probably going to hit off.
I just want to follow a question. Water toilets have been on for a long time, usually the election of all, you have some interesting things as far as the conductivity of the urine, you know. The issue is that that, you know, that tends to evaporate and also attack the delivery of, you know, urine into the groundwater and acts as a diversion system. I don't believe that the energy demand on that is, you know, is quite high. And I know that in places like, you know, the one, where the groundwater is, you know, is water-tailing fairly high, that that's been looked at as a successful alternative to reduce the impact. Have we had, have we had any inquiries, or any promotion of that on the table?
Absolutely, we've looked into some in toilets for years. There are two main types out there, in fact, there's a gas incinerative toilet also that is out there, used in cottages. Now, these were mainly used in like a beach house cottage, because there's one disadvantage of the incinerative toilet, I do, I do chuckle, but it's a big, big damage, is if one has got a load that they want to toast off, and they turn the switch on, then nobody can use that toilet till it cools down. So obviously, for a larger house, you're going to have more than one of them to get it sort of cycling. But you've hit upon it, the power cost is pretty high on those.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. And the, of course, there is still this little danger, if you've ever seen one here, let it clamp up, they actually have a little paper tray, and when it closes up, there've been times when it incinerates, and that flame comes right through it. Not to mention why little children have used their imagination for these incinerative toilets and figuring out what toys might be reshaped by the heat that is in that tank. There's a lot of issues there, but there've been power issues, and they can handle the volume. If you have three or four people in the house, or even two or three people, that if you could all coordinate your needs in that regard, it wouldn't be bad. But if you can't, you've got to have two of them.
Just one final question. If, just beginning with the gray water, how intrusive is the gray water as a, say, as a potential for onsite solution just for that item, and then use a central sewer for human waste? How, in your opinion, is that a viable, potentially viable solution for dealing with these two problems, to avoid getting into a central system with the gray water?
It totally depends on the cost of conveyance versus, you know, the availability of a plant that can handle the volume, because once you take the gray water out, you have a very high strength waste, so your treatment plant has to be of a different type of design. But some towns have thought, gee, now this might be where you go. It's done in Europe quite a bit, and there are other places where they say, "Okay, we can..." They have things called step systems, where there's a septic tank on the property, and it just emits the effluent from the septic tanks, so each field goes a plant for that tank, is on the property. All of those things really are examining the context of comprehensive wastewater planning. I have not seen to date any one of them come out with an economic benefit separating out the black and gray, and really conveying the black water. And there's some logistical or mechanical problems with that, because really, volume is what you need. We add very small amounts of waste to large volumes of water, because water carries things. And when it's in large volume, we can move it quickly, you know. But once you stop that flow inside those pipes, then...
You can move it cheaply, because it's gravity.
Yes. You can imagine what very concentrated waste in pipes that isn't moving very quick, what that can produce. There's some engineering difficulties there that haven't yet been...
Committed with the galvanic cell, acceleration, you know.
Yeah, and the explosive gas, and our formation, and things like that, so there are some challenges to it, and to my knowledge, nobody's following that route or considered that route because of those challenges.
And then finally, what support have we gotten from the state at all as far as they're taking another look at some of the applications of these? Because all of these things we've been talking about, in my, it was 30 years, because that's how long ago I was at architecture school, we were talking about alternative septic solutions, but the resistance was always up at the, you know, at DPH, the EPA, knowing whether they would accept these alternative solutions.
I don't see them as being contrary to me. I don't think they're jumping on the bad line and pushing them forward, which our experience has shown that, you know, it's appropriate to be pretty, pretty careful proceeding. 13 years ago, everyone's saying, "These are the best thing." We have 1,400 in the ground right now, 1,400 systems in people's... Had we not put the brakes on, by research and knowledge and getting the word out, I'm totally convinced we would have 10,000 today. And those 10,000 systems, consider what would happen when a town came up and said, "Well, that was a great thing you did, but it wasn't good enough." Now, these people spend 10 to 15 grand more than that Title V system, now being totally didn't do enough. Thank God, we started doing some of that stuff, because everybody had assumed this was 90% removable, all these things are great, just like the sewer treatment plant, and they have their place, don't get me wrong, they're my bread and butter, possibly the bad metaphor there, but they are, have their place when somebody needs to remove 50, 60%. Some of the values needed to be removed from our water sheds, we're glad they were not misapplied years ago, because it would have been quite an embarrassment. And that's really where we go with some of the things we're doing, with Kendall's programs and the research we're doing, which is, how do you keep people from putting money in the ground that they are going to regret when they run? Because nobody likes to look out in the back door and say, "Gee, I put out a V8, a real V8, a truck, a car, whatever, but I buried it in a septic system, and the town is not telling me I have to get out." So I think, and I've been very happy for the support that has come from the administration to do some of these, because they are more basic research that keeps people from having to spend money.
Absolutely.
We need it.
Right, and there's lots of new things, as you say, things change, but is the best system today is not going to be the best system 10 years from now?
Right, there's still going to be a lot more.
How can we help the people in the Town of Orleans, to, like, Sir Parker, where they made the investment, and now they have to go, they have to look at this again?
We can't help them, but we can help those who are about to replace, you know, we can use technologies to keep those systems alive till a final solution. You know, we can use technologies to keep those systems alive till a final solution is figured out, and we're working with DEP to do that now. And we're working with NSF, National Sedation Foundation, they're going to be giving us some money as well as the state, and I applied for some of the stimulus package, because I believe that it's an industry that we need to encourage here, because there will be, sewers are coming to certain parts of town. For everyone, and I've told Marcus before, not on my watch do I want KENUS to be signing laws for 20 years of commitment for somebody who's going to have to bend in five years. And that would be the fourth priority we can have to meet, and we're working to keep that in mind.
George, I don't intend to throw consultants under the bus, but oftentimes when towns hire consultants to work with them on their wastewater solutions, and they're asked about alternatives to sewer, they always say, "Well, but these alternatives haven't been approved yet." So they don't necessarily incorporate them into any of their recommendations. So, you know, how can we get consultants on board to at least say to towns, "You need to look at alternatives, so you can look at them"?
Well, Pat will do it.
Wow, that's true.
By bringing, elevating the discussion from public to rural. But, you know, I wouldn't throw them under the bus for this reason. Most consultants dealing with big pipes, there isn't a whole lot of information on some of the things they would need to know to put into their reports. I've criticized a few for saying, "Hey, you're getting short-shipped to these technologies. There's more information out there." But it's not on the surface. You're going to dig for that information. And often consultants tell, "Look, give us an answer, and here's a timeframe, the clock's ticking." So we have been able to provide them some, but on this particular issue, this black-gray water separation, nobody's done the work. Nobody has done the work. And, you know, they're looking sweet, and people say, "Okay, all that happens in Sweden." Well, you know, you can spread, if you only have to bring your urine two miles to distribute it on farmland, that's a little different than having a truck across the bridge, or having a docked truck. So those pieces of information, those really locally needed pieces of information, just aren't there, and they haven't got time, a consultant hasn't got time and or money to find them out. And we have a little bit vested interest here, because we don't want our citizens to have to pay more than they have to pay. But there's a balance there. In general, there's some very good consultants out there, the ones that have worked on the plans for the town of Barstow and Fountain, I think they're doing a great job. It's just, I understand the constraint. They're looking for the information that isn't there, and everybody's saying, "Well, it's got to be cheaper." It doesn't have to be cheaper, it might be more, we just need to find out.
Okay.
Yes.
I want to go back to the beach water, because we were talking about beach closings, and I want to make sure people understand, you know, how that program works and what trips the beach closing gave. And so could you explain a little bit?
Sure. We monitor 350 beaches every week, plus the Sunday publics, we do some Sunday publics. What we do is we go out on any particular day, take a sample where people are swimming in a prescribed manner, and run those samples in a prescribed way. Problems can occur if, for instance, we run samples Monday through Thursday. If somebody's got Thursday as their day to take these samples, then we've got one day, if we get a bad sample Friday, they're going to have a bad weekend, unless we're going to have a bad weekend.
Right.
So we take the sample, we run it, we read a plate, bacteria grows. We say, "There's a limit. Once the limit is crossed, we have to notify them to close the beach." They have a certain prescribed time to close the beach. If they cannot, we assist them. We send people out there to help them close the beach and make the notifications. And normally, this is a new normal world, we would take a retest that next day, and the beach would be hopefully open the following day. On Cape Cod, 99% of the time, if you get a bad sample, you'll get a good one the next time, which is one of the arguments we've made with the state for now closing on a single sample. Because think of it, here it is Wednesday, we take the sample, Thursday, we see it's bad. Well, when was it bad? It was bad Wednesday.
Right.
Now, so the next day, we take a sample, and it's good. We closed it this day when it was good.
Right.
Boom. So it's really a poor system, which is why in the state of California and others have sued EPA for a four-hour method.
Right.
And nobody's come up with that four-hour method. It's the best we have. It's a poor tool, but it's the best we have, and supposedly, TSC was being ill. I would encourage the state to look a little bit more at the risk assessment piece of it, particularly with the 99% rate of plants to clean samples, but to date, we have not been able to.
Right.
So how we do it, just one more thing, how we do it, is we peek at the samples when they start to look like they have bad colonies. If I see they're bad, and I say, "Ah, I shouldn't say that," the staff, and the staff sees that it is bad, they say, "Let's preempt and go out and take another sample today, so we can have it tomorrow, so the closure time's minimal." And that, in some circles, is not proper, because we should wait until a plate shows it's bad before we do it. But quite simply, we're never going to do that. We're going to try to preempt it, because we know beach closure is in July, is not something to worry about.
Well, as I said to you that morning, you know, I had selectmen and the delegate from Dennis, whose business is right there and being impacted, and it's been a bad rainy June, and, you know, there was a lot of concern, here's this beautiful weekend coming on, it's Friday morning, and the beaches are closed, and it looks like it could, you know, if it's Friday, then they're looking at, we're not going to open until Monday. It's an economic engine for all of these towns, particularly Orleans, and Saturday morning, I had messages on my machine just praising your efforts and how swift it was, and also the fact that you went down there yourself. So for that, I want to thank you and commend you for that. That really impressed all of the selectmen. It put the town much more ease, knowing that someone's always in charge.
We wanted to assure them that we had the time.
But that was a great moment, I thank you for that. So, well done, as I wrote to you and to your staff, so...
I would like to clarify one thing, because I wouldn't want anybody watching this to get the wrong impression. You say, "Well, we're delegates from Dennis, there's a steady business there, we've got calls and stuff like that." We do that for every beach.
Everyone.
We don't have to wait for a phone call.
I understand.
It's done.
I understand. It was already being in process, I understood that.
It was in process by the time we had that.
Right.
At one time, we talked about looking at how to identify the origin of a continuing affect, when we talked about DNA.
Yes, PCR technique.
And I wonder if, given what we're seeing in terms of sampling as far as to whether that's worthwhile to resurrect?
No, it's a very good, very good question. We are now working with Woods Hole, as we heard, they're using PCR. We don't know where the technique will go. We know that EPA got sued, we know that everybody and their mothers chasing that wagon to see whether they can come up with this magic test. We don't know where it will go. So rather than investing in any real effort to try to do PCR ourselves, we're working with a group down at Woods Hole, we're working with beaches primarily right now down in Providence Town, to see whether they can use PCR to figure out what the origins are, or whether their work may be the foundation for a four-hour test, because PCR is rapid, or I should say, it can be, there can be a four-hour rapid PCR test. If that ever sort of crystallizes, you'll see me before you in a budget here, asking for the X, for the instrument, purchase that, so that we can be ahead of the game. But right now, it doesn't look as promising, because there's not enough people on this coast to really work it out. But the folks at Woods Hole we're working with, we've worked with them before on the beaches piece, they're looking at the bacteria in the sand as well as in the water down in Providence Town, and we're sharing our information here, we're sharing our colonies with them, so that they can see what we get, whether the stuff we get is of the original origin. So we don't know yet, Bill. It's still a field that is, I don't want to say embryonic, because I think the baby's been born, but it's not quite matured, and as it does come into maturity, you will be seeing probably requests from us if we don't get a place on Brant Means. Because I think what will happen is EPA will say, "Okay, here's the method now, who's the labs?" It's still going to be, you know, if there's one lab in the middle of the country, it doesn't matter, it's a four-hour test, because it's a 12-hour transport. So we'll be looking at regional labs, we'll be talking to DEP and saying, "How can we gear up for this?" And this is also within recent algae scare, I don't know if you've seen algae scare that came in, which we're going to be asking the state whether we could do some preemptive sample spear, because we do have staff that have done blueberry algae identification and could have helped in situations.
That's right, and pond is...
Yeah, inkly pond. Don't breathe deep. I'm only kidding.
There's another problem with that, they don't use the form very actively to do aeration.
Well, this year, we will have, because of the cooler temperatures, then we won't have the thermocline set up, you know, get generally more mixing, so we're going to expect to see a lot more of this. We actually had a program, the state started a program this year, we actually had a program two or three years ago, where we would take samples from any town that asked, and we would identify the algae and give them some sort of minimal risk assessment. And we actually closed some beaches years ago. It was a little quieter, but we just put up signs saying, you know, "Don't weigh in the water, keep your dollars out of the water." That was after that, about 10 years ago, I think, nine years ago now, that dog died down in the Nickerson, I believe, one of the blueberry algae physi-creating microsystems, which shut your river down. We only deliver us.
Okay, one more question. All right. Well...
I just wanted to go back to Providence Town and the vacuum system that Providence Town has. Where are they on that? Have they figured out how to deal with the pumps and deal with the protection of that system? Because as I understand it, that's a vacuum system is something that they cannot operate without. There's no possibility of a gravity system.
I can answer with surety that there's no possibility of a gravity system. Where they're at in figuring all this out, I couldn't probably even have to ask them, but the decision to go with the vacuum system for the town was because of its layout. If they had a gravity system, you would have to have pipes well into the groundwater, which ordinarily isn't bad, but you get infiltration, and your treatment plant will be treating the ocean instead of the wastewater. So they went with that system. It wasn't a bad choice. There will be, you know, always challenges for every system, vacuum systems included. And now that they've discovered some of the soft points in it, they're just going to have to beef up either their surveillance of the system, or come up with different plans for something real time. But that's their engineer, so we don't really have a whole lot to do with it. We were involved initially in assisting them in what properties should or should not be seared, but the other that, that was a town's decision.
Right. Okay, Pat. Well, I'm going to have to use the fowlment situation as my example for the question. And you're familiar with great pond green pond boards, pond east fowlment, as those waters empty into Nantucket Sound, the consultants showed that there's 100% nitrogen loading at the mouth of the ponds, and then that nitrogen loading decreases as it moves further inland. Those are the areas that are actually on the plan to be seared, not any other section of town at this point. But if those alternative systems were put in place, I mean, we know that if those areas were seared, that the nitrogen would be removed, because it goes to a treatment plant. But if we were able to convince enough homeowners that, or if they were willing to use alternative systems like the urinary diversion one, or whatever they're called, would there be an immediate decrease in nitrogen in those ponds, or would you have to wait a while until that actually, until they were able to recover?
Well, you'd have to wait a while in any sense to see the recovery, and in some ways, nutrient addition in an embankment in a watershed is sort of like real estate, location, location. Right up close to the embankment where it's poorly flushed, that's where you get your best bank for your buck to remove it, because you'll see the more immediate effect. That groundwater was on its play, and within a year, it was going to be discharged. Your question as to whether up and higher in the watershed, if everybody shared this and removed 50%, for instance, would you obviate the need for sewer? And I would say, "No," because the calculations were done. I said, "We need to remove 90% of the nitrogen from this watershed." And how you do it? You can, you know, you can remove a whole lot in one area and let another area skip, and that's basically what most towns will do. They'll sewer the areas where it's economically viable to sewer, and you can max it by the nitrogen. And I shouldn't say let the rest skip, because as you know, John Waterbury and I have worked on my lot for the town, which calls the whole town to some restrictions of growth, particularly veterans, which we expect to nitrogenize. So I think most towns will take that approach. But in essence, they outline the watershed, and they say, "Okay, we need 80% or 70%." Now, there's this watershed, it's all these scattered houses up here, sewer, it would be really expensive. Well, we can really belt this area down here, and then take care of the problem. They do it, they just run the numbers. It's just like you and I would do, if you're in our house, "No, where do you get your best bank for your buck? You go there." And the rest, you say, "Well, how to take care of it?"
Okay, thanks. George, I think you covered everything that we could...
Thank you.
That we could think of today, but thank you so much.
Sorry it was a little late?
No, it's fine. Thank you.
You're a little world.
Yes, all right. We are supposed to have our fire chiefs here, we've been here...
3:30.
Oh, 3:30? Oh, I'm sorry.
It was originally, and it's switched.
Okay.
We're actually, I can take care, I'm going to go check on them, but before I do, I'm going to ask you, this is kind of in George's bailiwick as well, I have the materials for the interim loan note for our next $4 million borrowing from the Lord of the Faith and Trust for the Septic Government Program. So I need to get those signed, because I need to get those back to our bond council, so we can get that money in the hands. And while you guys do that, I'm going to take care of it.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from the public or press while you're here, on anything? Okay.
I have an update, if you will.
I'm sorry?
I have an update, if you will.
Oh, right.
This meeting is the first that is streaming live over the internet.
Oh, my goodness!
So that's a very positive step in the right direction. We have not publicized that fact, because I wanted to make sure it all worked before we trumpet our successes to the world. So, but I believe that it is, it shows me that everything's working fine, and I think we're going to be okay. I do have, yes...
What's the storage going to be?
The storage is going to be at the provider, which is Webex, and I will send you all emails about that.
If somebody wanted to watch this who wasn't watching it live now...
They will be able to dial it up, yes.
Okay, and where would they dial up? Is it Barnstable Video or something?
It will be available at the barnstablevideo.com site, which is where I split it into segments, so that there'll be one segment on the Board of Health, and there'll be one segment on Cape Care, and there'll be one segment on the Fire Chiefs. However, that won't happen this time, because we have scheduling issues.
Right. You have to leave.
I have to leave. There's no way I can do the Fire Chiefs, and I personally don't see how you can cover an issue as complex as Cape Care in half an hour.
Right, and I'm...
So I'm going to request that you make a request of the county administrator, I'm sure, I'm sorry he's not here, to schedule these, so that we can, you can have more time with the people before you, and the people in Barnstable County can see what, our goal is transparency, or your goal is transparency. And because of the timing issues, we're not able to do it.
Should meet.
Uh, we, yes, we should meet earlier.
That's all it takes.
But Cape Care is coming at, they were supposed to be here in three. I have a feeling there's a mix-up on that issue.
Because the Cape Care appeared before the Assembly delegates, and it was a long, important, and complicated issue.
It was, and I, I had the feeling that they were... And I had the feeling that they were, they felt that since you both were there, they did not have to have a meeting before us. I was surprised to see them on the agenda. Anyway, all right.
So, that's my request. Maybe we meet earlier because it's too compressed. Can't do it. Can't cover it all.
I agree. And you will be going to the Assembly soon. On that note, I think maybe we should take a recess until Mark is back and we know what we're doing here.
That's a good.
To share with you a memo that we got. Pat, you've probably seen this, from Rob White. He's the head of the entire State County Municipal Employees Association of Massachusetts and he was informing members of the retirement board specifically, they'll let you know that they have formed a special commission to study the Massachusetts contributory retirement system. And their first meeting, I think it was July 6th, they agreed to form a three subcommittee of their committee to study specific areas of the retirement system. The first committee is to look at system financing, funding, employer employee contribution rates, actuarial assumptions, purchases of service, vesting, et cetera, et cetera. Second, subcommittee will look at benefit design. They'll look at classification, average period for earnings, accrual rate, pension benefit gap. And they'll also look at, and I'm sorry, the third subcommittee will look at retirement security, retirement health insurance, post-retirement survivor benefits, COLA provisions, pension forfeiture, penalties for fraud, and work after retirement. So, there's also risks. Who of the committee asserting on each of the subcommittees? So, you can take a look at that. That might interest you.
Do you have another copy?
I don't have another copy, but if you're interested, I can make another copy.
I guess.
Did you get it?
I mean, I get what this.
Where you go with that. I want to remind you folks that Thursday, July 23rd at 9:00 at the Tillman Art Center is the year 10 graduation ceremony for the American Cape Cod program. Is that unbelievable? I was asked by Darlene if any of you would like to make remarks at the graduation.
Sure. It's on the 23rd, isn't it?
23rd, Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday, 23rd.
Sure. Are you going?
I'm going to.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
I don't care who, if anybody wants to.
Put you down to speak up.
Sure. Put me down to speak up and you'll be there, Bill?
What time is it?
It's 9:00. At the Tillman Art Center. 9 to 11:00. They have cake at 11:00. Refreshments and cake.
Cake? Slap me in the cake. It's brutal. It's embarrassing. And is there anything else?
Yeah, I think I'll be, I might be able to.
Not you. No, not yet. Just I have two more, two more short things. At the Assembly today, originally the SADS report, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report, they were going to give a report to the Assembly and that, that's been postponed.
Oh, it has?
Yes, that's been postponed.
Oh, the DUC was going to be there.
They wanted to make sure that the PA was not available. Leslie was the only one there. It's better if they have a bigger group.
I think it would be wise if some members of the EDC were there.
Well, that's why they were.
I think that's the whole idea, yeah.
They were not able to make it, so.
So, they postponed that and Diane is working on rescheduling that. She's looking at, she believes August 5th.
You think you're back?
Good morning. And you should have gone, hopefully you got your final published version of the SADS report.
Are there more of those available?
I can certainly, you want to take mine?
Sure.
I'll get myself one.
Yeah.
Is it?
Some of the other big towns have.
I believe it is online, Bill.
It is online.
Submission dot org.
So, people want, people want to get it.
Yeah.
Perhaps you'd be kind of to put that in the paper, if you get a copy of it.
Well, any of them.
And that's all, that concludes the report from the county administration.
Well, thank you. Following our agenda, our new formatted.
Sort of got ahead of us.
Are there any, are there any reports from anybody else? I mean, do you have any?
This is Chief Street, Bill.
If you wish to.
The chairman recognizes you.
Yes, I will recognize Chairman Doherty, I mean Commissioner Doherty.
You could. I went to the kickoff for the food program last week.
Yes, unfortunately, I was unable to do that.
Were we, were we tied up?
Yeah, we were, but he ran, yeah, he went.
Oh, good for him.
Well, I had to come back to the kickoff contact, which was at 2:00. And there's, they're encouraging more, kickoff contact is encouraging their members to do more distribution of reports to boards of selection about efficiency program. Community call here to that DVD.
Right.
And I've given that to them. It should be in Orleans a couple of times down the road, Cape, and be encouraged to give more publicity for it. On Friday, there was a joint meeting of the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce and the local chambers of commerce.
Did you attend that?
Yes, I did. And they expressed their appreciation that the county commissioners have, you know, have decided to be in contact with them. It was a very interesting meeting and I think at the end of it, the feeling I had that they want to cooperate, they want to work together and there was a lot of positive feeling about that. Keep your eyes.
So, what did, what did transpire between the Cape Cod shaver and that? I mean, with Bill Zamer on, at the helm now, I'm sure.
Bill Zamer basically reached out to them and said that whatever happened in the past was in the past. And of course, he was opening up, you know, an opportunity going forward of, let's see, open and find discussion with the opportunity that the interest of the local chambers of commerce, who indeed interests of the chamber of commerce as a whole, and that they have already made adjustments in their, in their pages that have links to the local chambers of commerce. And they feel that by working together, that we can achieve a lot of progress. And, but the emphasis in that meeting was to try to find an avenue to support other businesses other than just the tourist engine, which is one of the things that the local chambers were, were concerned about. And the chamber of commerce is sort of open to that because they mentioned that as a, I mean, recently had a sit-down for the region conference where he was on for technology development. But pointed out that they're all looking at the opportunities that they just need to look at the ways that they can work together. That's essentially what they're interested in doing.
Bill, did they come up with any specifics as to how they were going to do that? Because when you have two groups that are working separately, how do you, how do you get them to work together when they're all doing the same thing?
They thought that we needed such a joint committee to do it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Everything was, they're all optimistic about sort of that. The Town of Harwich joined Brewster to vote to use the COOP to finance the wind turbine program. And that was essentially to give a 100-day day, I guess applies to.
Yeah, it was kind of an exclusivity clause. We have the 100 days to put this thing together.
They kind of recognized that in a risk assessment, that I wasn't convinced that the surplus that they were talking about, you know, $250,000 at the end of 10 years is realistic in terms of doing what I call standard, you know, present worth analysis as to whether or not the amount of money they would have to invest in order to pursue their own angle and it would really result in, you know, those kinds of real terms. But in any case, that would be given, Larry Cole certainly is the most knowledgeable one on the present board on this matter. Larry worked his usual outstanding job of pulling everything forward. For Maggie, we didn't get to ask her.
I know, she told me, yeah. Can I just speak about that for a little bit?
Sure.
Because we've been spending a lot of time on that Maggie. We put together pro formas analyzing various cost scenarios for Brewster, for Harwich. I've done some stuff for Wealth Week now. Yarmouth has asked me to do some stuff. And as Bill said, what we did that for was so that the towns could compare kind of doing the project on their own with doing it through the COOP. And what changed a little bit was even the towns' consultants were assuming that given the net metering credits, you could just cash out whatever power that was available from your wind generation project that you didn't use for your own municipal load into cash. And it turns out that as the green, as the net metering regulations have been promulgated, that's not the case. And so, the COOP is kind of well and uniquely positioned to take advantage of net metering credits because we can spread them out to all of our members, but the towns doing the project on their own will not be. So, I think that went a long way to kind of convincing the towns that it makes sense to do it through the COOP because they can't cash out the project on their own anyways. So, yeah, we spent a lot of time with Harwich and fell on the time with Brewster.
And it's paid off because they're all going forward.
And Jim is been, Jimmy Ream's been very supportive.
Yes, and he was, he was the other night. The other thing that Harwich expressed their concern after we got through this discussion is the, that the state's, the state is not supporting the half of the economy that they do.
And he's regional.
Yeah, it's, it seems so, it's so disappointing because that seemed to be a really realistic, you know, regional program that would not require a lot of investment and a lot of benefits to it. So, Robin Wilkins in particular, who we know is very welcome, he's been there supporting that, expressed a lot of concern about why, why doesn't the state want to support something that's obviously in the interest of small communities? And making a point of the 251 towns in the Commonwealth, 300 of them are, you know, are too, maybe too small to really get behind and to listen to the results. There also was an appreciation from Jimmy Ream from, by Harwich for health department support. And he made a point, you know, on the air, talking about the many programs that our health department supplies to the town. I've interviewed on Solid Waste, Patty Daly, Patty from the commissions, well as some other Cape Cod commission editors, and Patty Howard from Coven. Dave Simza had done something on Lyme disease and I've distributed the Lyme disease DVD to the town and to the Lord of Cape to get some more attention to it. But if we're on, are we on?
Yes.
It's very important for people to recognize the advice that is available on our webpage as regards to protection from Lyme disease. This is the season when they're, you know, when they're most active. People have to recognize some personal responsibility for inspection because that's really what we, you know, what we have to do right now. And I want to, I can't emphasize that enough, that's not something you want to go home at your vacation. And Steve Abbott will be coming to talk about the success that they had from the private sector and creating the Cape Cod healthcare network where they consolidated hospitals. And we'll be talking about how they went down from a board population of 121 to 21. So, I'm really excited about that. And I would like to.
Well, thank you. I have my eye on it. Yes. We made our annual inspection of the county correctional facilities last week, as you all know, the jail as we know it. And one of the areas that we did not get to visit was the fire station on the base that has all the dispatch. And we're having the fire chiefs today and that's the major issue for them. And I think it would be very helpful if we arranged time for us to get back out there within the next couple of weeks to actually see that dispatch service at the fire station.
Actually, we're not formally meeting on the 29th if you want to try to do that.
We're not formally meeting on the 29th.
No, we're going to try to maybe do it fast daily.
Can I go back to, is that something we could do? I mean, are we all? I'm finding it tricky now.
We'll be coming back, I think they'll be able to.
Have you been there? Have you already been there before?
No.
No?
Well, we don't have to.
Well, it doesn't have to be, you know, it doesn't have to be a Wednesday.
No, we can do it.
Yeah, we could just go. We could, we could do it sometime when it's convenient for all of us.
We could actually go without them being supposed to be, just show up and if we could deliberate.
Well, it has to be postmania if you have to show up.
Two show up, that's the difference.
Yeah. Or, yes. And then we could contact maybe the sheriff and he could arrange to take us up.
All right, let me, I'll work on it.
Okay. Brenda with the TICS, you mentioning TICS, she sent something to me, there's a meeting on this, did you talk, just talk about that? There's a meeting on legislation that she's having.
Other than the one that she mentioned she can't read.
Yes. I'll have to look that date up again.
Yeah, because I want you to mention the date.
Yeah, I just wanted to, right.
We should.
I think it's, to me, it seems like the 23rd at this point because it's been kicked around. What, where do you want us to sign? I don't understand what that is, Mark.
I think it's not supposed to be in there.
Okay. It was something you got stuck in by accident.
Yes.
I guess we will take a 15-minute recess if we are all on.
Yeah, take a five minute for now, yeah. Carol just told me that Dr. O'Malley and another person were supposed to be here and they're obviously not, so.
Okay.
She had to convert it earlier as Monday, so.
She did speak with them as Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. There's probably some horrible traffic on Route 6.
Could be, yeah.
We can't get any news.
So, yeah, we're going to be kind of tight. We're going to be very tight.
Okay.
Because the Assembly's meeting at 4:00.
Right.
Actually, can I, is that loan note?
Yes, this is off.
I'll take that and make sure that.
Can you do recess?
Yes, please.
We're going to recess, yeah.
I have something for you.